Ready? At 6:01, I'll call this special board meeting to order item number two, establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that all board members are present with the exception of Dr. Rivera. Item number three, approval of Wesaco High School ban to attend the San Antonio Marshall Varsity Football Game on September 2nd, 2016 in support of the varsity football team. Dr. Leo?
Members of the board, after discussion at the last board meeting and in conversation with the high school principal, Ms. Morales, we are asking for approval of the entire ban to attend. I had reported to you that sixty members of the band would be attending the game.
So I move.
And instead, thank you.
Second.
Thank you so much.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez, I mean Adrian Gonzalez, the second by Andrew Gonzalez. Sorry for the interruption, but I think we're all kind of committed to making that happen. Let's hope we're there. Any further discussion? This is a good move. Thank you for your consideration and for Ms. Morales to bring this to us. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote to by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion carries. Hope you guys have a safe trip. Good luck to our football teams. It's next weekend. Item number four, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the underwriting syndicate for the unlimited refunding bond series 2016. Dr. Leo?
We have been reporting to you progress and we've taken several steps in preparation for the refunding of Bond Series 2016. We are at the point now where the board is being asked to approve the underwriting syndicate and so I will pass it over to Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Chris Vela, the district financial advisor.
Good evening, Mr. Fuentes, Dr. Leo, members of the board. We left a copy of the agenda item on your desk. Plus a copy of the presentation. The presentation is the same one we presented last week. We are, the board approved to proceed with the bond refunding. The one thing that we hadn't done was the selection of underwriting, the underwriting syndicate, as they call it. And on page sixteen of your presentation, Mr. Salinas?
This one, this packet? You have that on?
Yes.
At your desk.
We have a package here on, but I think it's probably page nineteen for us.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, got it. All right. Sounds good. Go ahead.
This page explains the information on the underwriters. There's usually a senior manager and then co-managers. The senior manager is the one underwriting company that leads the effort on the sale of the bonds. The co-managers assist with the selling, but they have a lesser share of the sale of the bonds. And on page seventeen, we present information on selecting the underwriting companies. Page eighteen shows, that's eighteen, these are the top ten companies in the state, state of Texas, on doing bond sales.
According to the number of issues?
Okay, yes.
Andres, what are you recommending on this deal?
Excuse me?
What are you recommending?
That the board select the underwriters. We're not recommending a company. Usually we don't. The board selects a company that they recommend. What I wanted to say, page eighteen has the top ten companies. Page nineteen has six companies that have approached the district trying to be the underwriters for this issue. There's Silver, Branford, Strank and Company, Stifel, Nicholas and Company, Stephens, Inc., Frost Bank, FDN Financial, and Estrada and Hossa. From those six companies, two are in the next page, page nineteen, that shows companies that have done underwriting business with the district. At the last one issue that we did, we had Estrada and Hossa be the senior manager, and then we had two other companies, Cabrera Capital Markets and Frost Bank. So Estrada and Hossa got to sell fifty percent of the bonds and Cabrera, Cabrera Capital Markets, twenty-five percent, and Frost Bank, twenty-five percent.
Why isn't Cabrera here?
They did not approach the district. They are listed on page nineteen, but they did not approach the district for this sale. That's why they're not on page eighteen.
So of the ones who have done previous business for the district, Estrada and Hossa and?
Frost Bank.
Frost Bank?
Yes. Are part of the six that approached the district for this sale.
Any recommendation on the other?
Well, the company, FDN Financial, I believe that's First Tennessee, they initially started with a, they were trying, evaluating the possibility of making more interest for the district with the refund.
Are these companies ranked or is there a rating?
No.
A rating for them?
Well, the only rating, like I said, is on the first page, seventeen, that showed from the state of Texas, the company that has sold the most bonds.
And is that where he says the rank? Andres, on page?
Well, that's the rank that they have by number of bond sales done.
Oh, okay.
Raymond James has the most.
Okay.
Understate.
Okay.
Estrada and Hossa, number six, and those companies.
Number five. Is there a price?
Frost Bank and number nine.
Is there a price that we incur?
Yes, I don't have an exact figure.
Are they, are they all pretty much the same or are they different?
Normally, that, that process of underwriting, the day before the sale, we have what we call a pricing meeting, and the senior underwriter presents his views on, and those are the syndicate members' pricing views to our desk, our underwriting desk, and they negotiate for the next morning to go out for bids and, and the underwriter's compensation is also negotiated at that level.
So, Mr. Vela, right now, all we're trying to approve is just the underwriting, no, we're not choosing any firm or anything like that right now, are we?
No.
No, you are.
Selective firms.
Must, may I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Must the syndicate be three financial institutions? Is the board going to identify three or is there a number or can they just go with one? And I know you, you have advised that it is wiser to spread the wealth, so to speak, because the complexity of the work that the underwriters will have to do can be facilitated if there is more than one firm that the district selects.
That is correct. And, and the idea behind the, the firms here, first of all, we're talking about permanent school fund paper, okay? And the second thing is that it's, that it's also a good practice on the part of, of setting up your strategy for the underwriting team to have people that, I mean, members of the syndicate that can penetrate different markets and different buyers. For example, if you go with one, he may only bring this and it doesn't work in the favor of the district. So if you get the three, and the, the recommendation of three was from our underwriting desk, that, that is a recommendation from them. Normally, on these matters, we defer to our underwriting desks that are in the market every day. And this is how we came up with this recommendation of three. So the idea is to generate as many orders as possible, to oversubscribe the transaction, so that they can get decreases in the interest rate that it costs the district. That's the whole idea behind that. Identify as many buyers that the other one doesn't identify and bring orders to the table, so that you can adjust your scale downward.
Who did our last one?
Estrada and Hossa was the senior manager, then Frost Bank and Cabrera Capital Markets were the co-managers.
And can we not use the same ones or is it not recommended?
I think if they do it, if they did a good job, I think so.
The board could. There's no problem with Cabrera.
Would Cabrera be?
They just hadn't approached us. That's what we had.
Does it matter that Cabrera did not solicit business?
That the company?
That is correct. And I need to check real quick if, can I, can I have a minute or so?
Sure.
Sure.
I was gonna answer.
Yeah.
Do you want us to?
Can we just move on and go to, come back to it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll come right back to this.
Yeah.
So we'll move on to item number five, approval of continued iStation online interactive program for the fourth year to enhance the reading abilities of pre-kindergarten through second grade students in English and Spanish, including a home bundle to support at-home reading practice. Dr. Leo?
Members of the board, and I'll ask Ms. Peterson to come up as well. iStation is an online program that we want to purchase for the fourth year. We have had this program available for pre-K through fourth grade?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade. What you are receiving is a folder with some effectiveness information, just so that you can see in the three years that we have had this service, what have we seen in terms of progress or lack thereof, if that is the case, in reading ability, reading scores amongst our students. I would like to preface by, by saying, the state under the Student Success Initiative requires every district to, to intervene when students present reading problems, to have a kind of intervention strategy, and iStation is one of those. And so when you hear Ms. Peterson refer to levels, to?
Tier one.
Tiers, I'm sorry. Those are the levels of intervention. Tier one, tier two, and tier three. And tier three is the level where students are having the most difficulty. And so at that tier, we want to see numbers decrease. At tier one, we want to see numbers increase. Please keep that in mind as she presents to you what we have discovered in terms of effectiveness of this program. And incidentally, we are asking for the purchase of this online program at the cost to the district of seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars for pre-K through second grade, and the state funds the remaining grades. Ms. Peterson?
You go with that?
Yes. The data you have is actually just for last school year, 2015 to 2016, but we've seen similar data from the prior years. We have worked on usage, because usage is a key part of this program. And the first couple of years when it was implemented, we weren't getting the usage at the campuses that we needed to get to see the results. So we're more following company guidelines. We've also increased the training. And Mrs. Chamberlain very carefully monitors the implementation and the usage at the campus level. We've trained the facilitators, the teachers, and she goes over those reports. And one reason that we like this software so well, one, it feeds into the program that we're using with our third through fifth graders that's funded by the state, but also it's individualized. It puts students on an individual path and gives them just what they need based on diagnostic reports. It tracks their progress and builds in support as they need it. So in any lab of twenty-two students, you might have students working on multiple lessons at the same time, everything geared for their level. It also gives us a tremendous amount of reports that can drill down to the student level. So if a teacher is having a class where students aren't progressing, we can pull these reports for iStation, go over it with the teacher, with the facilitator, with the campus principal. So it's got a wealth of reports. It's also on the state approved list for the required early reading assessment and the required pre-K assessment. So by purchasing this, we are also able to submit the data that we need to submit to the state. If we did not have istation, we would have to purchase something else to cover our requirement on that. We have to submit two reading scores for students in K one and two, a fall and a spring, and we also need, on PMS, and we also need to submit for pre-K. So istation is on the state approved list for assessments on these.
I would like to point out, if I may, in addition to the comments you've heard from Ms. Peterson, the last two pages that show usage trend, the charts, it is interesting, we were noting in, in our discussion, Ms. Peterson and I, that the schools that show higher levels of usage are schools that had better performance reports as well. That's not to say that istation in and of itself is the sole reason why those schools do well. But those schools that use this program is research-based, and those schools that follow research-based pedagogy do better. And we will be taking these reports to principals as well to try to make the case for their recognizing that this is a very strong path to school improvement, and they would be wise to make sure that they monitor whether their staff is using this program or not.
It also addresses a range of reading components at different levels, phonemic and phonological awareness, vocabulary, listening comprehension, and in first and second grade, adds a writing component, which was very helpful for us as we're looking at our fourth grade writing scores.
So for many possible reasons, we recommend approval.
So move.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez to approve as recommended by administration. Do I have a second?
Second. Ms. Peterson, so, question, real quick.
Yes, sir.
So those third graders that are part of this program, right, did they test this year?
We, we've had this program in place, but the first couple of years, we didn't have, we weren't following the usage guidelines.
Okay.
So it's, these third graders, yes, had istation when they were in second grade. The third graders tested last spring.
Right.
So, and if you look at the results of the schools that had the better usage?
Yeah, 'cause I remember seeing the reports, I believe their reading, fifth grade had declined, and then math and whatever grade, but that's why I was asking for third grade. I don't remember exactly if they had improved, but?
We'll bring all of that to you September 12th, so you can see the overall where we're at.
Okay. Is this only for one year?
This is a one-year purchase, yes, uh-huh.
Now, this is an online reading program, is that correct?
Yes, it's online.
Are students able to sign on after school, at home?
Yes, yes. We purchased the home component, so it is accessible by home. And Mrs. Chamberlain met with several parents who were having some concerns over the summer, and they were able to access it all summer long and use it at home.
This, I know that you get called by other vendors and a lot of people coming in trying to sell the, the same type of product. Do you feel that this is the best one for us that will help Wesaco better?
Yes, I specifically asked Mrs. Chamberlain that question again this afternoon, and yes, the answer is yes.
All right.
Have we tried anything else?
We have looked at other programs and we have looked at the information they present. We've looked at the skills they've covered. We look at the reports that they generate, and we look at the state list of requirements for the assessments, and we feel this one best meets all of those needs and the needs of our students.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Dr. Leo and Ms. Peterson. If not, we'll go ahead and act on this. All those in favor, please vote to by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion carries. Are you ready, Mr. Vela?
Yes.
All right, we'll go back to item number four, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval of the underwriting syndicate for the unlimited refunding bond series 2016.
The question was on Cabrera, and Cabrera is active and is able to participate in the syndicate if necessary, I'm sorry. Cabrera is active and if selected by the district, could participate in the syndicate.
Okay, so that's three, right?
Yes.
We need one more?
No.
We're okay with three?
With three? I think what we're, you were asking, Mo, was the last time we did this refunding, 'cause we did it twice already, right?
Yes.
We did two other bond.
Right.
I mean, you're asking if we can keep the same team in the same capacities, which was fifty percent was Estrada as the?
Estrada and Hossa.
As the senior manager?
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
And then Frost Bank and Cabrera at twenty-five percent each, right?
Yes.
And we have Cabrera listed on page twenty?
That's what he, you went and talked to them?
No, I talked to my desk.
Okay. I mean, I'm not, I'm okay with moving forward like that if somebody would like to make the motion.
So move.
Second.
So, to be clear, we have a motion and a second, a motion by Adrian Gonzalez, second by Mr. Nieto, to, to go ahead and continue with the same team that we had in the last one, fifty percent.
Yes.
The senior manager, Estrada and Hossa and Company, twenty-five percent each to Frost Bank and to Cabrera Capital Markets.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
How much, question, how much, by doing this, how much is it gonna save the district per year? Or, I know the percent's got like a two-point-eight-oh or two-point-eight-five?
Two-point-six million.
I'm not sure.
If you look at page ten of the presentation, you can see the savings by year on column E.
Oh, yes.
So it's about two and a half million?
Two and a half, two thousand six, almost two.
Now, remember that these are market price plus twenty-five basis points to adjust for any market risk going forward.
So the actual will be a little different, but this is pretty close.
Assuming interest rates hold, you know, and we only wrote the twenty-five, yes.
So now, right now, interest rates are low.
Very low.
But when the presidential election comes, they might increase. You never know.
There's a, there's a possibility always.
It might, yes.
I wish my crystal ball was that good and I wish I could sort of add to that. But there's always a concern that policies may change and impact the markets.
Right.
That's the only concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Two-point-five, okay.
As always, thank you, Andres, and thank you, Mr. Vela. With respect to the motion on the floor, all those in favor, please vote to by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much, and we'll see you in September, a couple weeks?
Fifteen.
Sounds good. Item number six, discussion and possible action to approve independent contractor agreements for off-duty police officers and deputy constables on an as-needed basis. Dr. Leo?
For this item, members of the board, I'll ask Mr. Salinas to give you details.
Members of the board, Ms. Peterson's passing on a two-year study. So in front of you, you're gonna see what we've been spending on our off-duty police officers, constables the last two years. Two years ago, we spent thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
And for the, for the year of 2015 and 16, we've spent, we cut it almost in half at sixteen thousand, nine-nine-four. Now, if you see number seventeen on the list, that wasn't part of, that was paid with this account. If you see at the very top, on account number one-nine-nine-five-two-six-two-nine-nine-zero-zero-nine-thirty-eight-six-ninety-nine, number seventeen was paid out of that account, but she was paid not for off-duty, she was paid for workshops. So the secretary, I did talk to her today to reclassify that expense. I did look at the PO. The PO shows that she was at a, at some workshops for active shooter and stuff like that.
Are you referring to fiscal year 2015, 16?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So I did complete a two-year comparison. This is just on an, on an as-needed basis for our football games, for escorts, for our band students' out-of-town games, for graduation, for whatever we need, and we use them.
It's great that we're saving money, just, again, not at the, at the cost of providing the safety necessary at all these functions. So, in my opinion, continue to use them as needed, obviously, but don't cut it short either.
Of course.
We wanna make sure that we have enough representation there to make sure that everybody that attends is safe.
And that's important to us, to make sure that we have armed officers at our, our events, just in case something goes down.
So what is the recommendation and what is the administration asking us to do?
To approve the agreement as presented in the packet?
So move.
Andrew, that's you. Motion by Andrew Gonzalez to approve the agreement as presented by administration. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Oscar Caballero. Ivan, did we, did legal counsel review this agreement?
Yeah, we revised it, submitted it to the administration last week.
And this is what we'll be presenting to the constable's office?
To the individuals.
The individuals.
Individuals.
Okay.
We did put a, a revised version of Mr. Pettis, and we did the red line version too for your backup in your packets, so y'all can see what was changed.
'Cause this is both Wesaco PD and constable, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote to by saying aye.
Aye.
Poll same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to authorize administration to release a request for proposals for voluntary whole life insurance. Dr. Leo?
Members of the board, we are asking that you authorize us to go out for RFPs, requests for proposals for voluntary whole life insurance.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Adrian Gonzalez and a second by Mr. Nieto.
Mike, that's?
Any further discussion?
Yes. Mike, can you come up to the podium, please?
Just before you ask, start miking, asking Mike for questions, I was approached by somebody regarding this request, and I asked legal counsel to look into this particular item, because it was presented to me as if we had an agent of record, we had this policy that was provided as supplemental insurance to our employees. So when I approached Mr. De La Rosa about it, he was saying that for the last couple of years, we haven't had this particular voluntary product as part of our package, correct?
That is correct.
So my question to legal counsel was to follow up with him, to make sure that there wasn't anything legally that we had done as a board, some sort of action that we had taken that he wasn't aware of.
Okay.
For whatever reason. So this is not something that he put on there himself. So you can ask him questions, but that wasn't necessarily, this agenda item was more based off of the discussion that I had with legal counsel and risk management regarding products that used to be provided to our employees, because I do remember them at our open enrollment for voluntary products, and asked if it was something that we should put on there.
Mike, can you share some of your concerns about the whole life?
Just like any other insurance product, there are positive things, it does have its positive things, it does have, it does have its negative points. As a professional, you know, risk management person looking at it, it does have, like I said, it has advantages and has disadvantages. So really, some of the advantages are, it does provide for a permanent life insurance through a cash value that builds through the, through the course of the, of the policy. And they're very good. A lot of people do buy them, they buy them on the outside. My concern is when we're offering them through payroll deduct or if we go out for proposals, number one, it's very hard to evaluate individual insurance products that are individually underwritten. So it's very hard to evaluate what's, who, what would be the best product. And also, there's a cash value component that the employee has to decide how much to invest in it to fund the life insurance later on. So the issue is, is that once that, if that product was, was gone out to bid and awarded, the other issue that I have with it is every three years when we'd go out to bid for it again, the question then becomes, okay, if there's a new product that comes in, what happens to the people that bought it three years ago? So they would have to elect to continue it under a bank draft, or, like in the case that we have with these other products, we would agree to grandfather these products in, you know, for as long as the employee can make the contributions. Another issue is that if an employee decides to, to cancel the policy that he bought three years ago in favor of the new one that's being offered by the district, then they lose that cash value that they had invested in that district, otherwise known as a surrender charge. So it, you know, that has not been a product that we've offered in my tenure here. Maybe it was several years ago, but for obvious reasons, we no longer have it. So based on whether or not you'd wanna, you know, offer that for, have us look for it or look at it, you know, that's certainly at the discretion of the board.
When you say we don't have it, there's nobody enrolled in it right now? Or you just, we're not offering it? Is that what you're saying?
We don't offer it to employees as part of the package that's authorized by the board. Now, that doesn't stop an insurance agent from calling an employee and saying, can I meet with you during your conference period, or can I meet with you after school, and they propose this product to them. So there are several employees that we do have that had this product years ago that we continue to bankrupt, or we continue to payroll deduct. Those individuals are grandfathered in.
But this is completely voluntary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I mean, we can offer it, or the district can, can open it up and offer it, and it's completely voluntary. They can just say no, walk away, and?
That is correct.
Or they can choose to use it.
They can, they can purchase it, that's correct.
Because right now, we're just going for proposals, correct?
Well, that was, that was the agenda item, if you do, if you are inclined to?
What's your recommendation, Mike?
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me share before he gives you that recommendation. I sell insurance. That's what I do for a living. We offer all the voluntary products, and there's only a handful of agents in the valley that pertain to the voluntary products. You have other agents that are like myself, that work for the other companies, major companies, and some independent agents, that this is their livelihood. They don't have the ability to come into the district like those certain groups do in the other voluntary products. So now you're taking away from that independent agent or, or an agent like myself that sells those products on a, hey, let me write your home, let me write your auto, let me write your life insurance. Now you're taking away from that type of agent when you're offering it this way. Again, like Mr. De La Rosa said, the individuals can pick up the phone, show them their policy that they have to offer, or make contact with, with one of our employees. It's what I do every day. But to offer the whole life policy with some of the drawbacks of it is a concern to me. And so I don't know what his recommendation will be, but, but just so that you know, I am against it.
Roger, what do you see in other districts?
Dr. Leo and Mr. President, members of the board, trustees, for the record, I'm Roger Gattasum. We have, we encounter that from time to time, and unfortunately, it's just human nature. The thought process is that you have an agent that, if you do offer it, and it has happened in other school districts, where they, they charge, they charge the employee what they call the minimum premium. In other words, just enough to make? just enough to make the policy solid for the first year. The second year, he gets a notification saying he's now gotten a year older and you're not reaching the minimum target. So what happens is they're requiring more premium contribution, and then you have some questions from the employees and then they start complaining. The difficult part is, and I shared this with Mr. De La Rosa prior to the meeting, is evaluating the product is very difficult, particularly when you have rollover or churning of, of clients, which means you keep going back to the same client and turning the policy. I know most reputable agents don't do that, but I have seen it as a constant problem in other school districts, where the same employee's been paying for twelve years and is still on the first two years of his coverage. The only thing that I can advise them to do after that point is don't do it again. But, you know, if you enact something like this, or if you do offer something like this, it certainly is going to be difficult to control. You do have some policies already in force here that we've serviced as a courtesy. But just for the, for, just for your information is, once you enroll them, if the employee leaves the school district, goes someplace else, quits, retires, you have to continue to make that premium contribution, even though they're not here making that payment through payroll deduction, because you gave up that right. So they can actually walk in here in the middle of the month, give you the money, and then you have the credit there, you get your basic credit back at the, on your bank. But you assume a lot of liability, is what I'm saying. It's a good thought, again, if, if it was a controlled system, but it's not. It's very flexible.
So Mike, what's your recommendation? So that way we can-
Since the other component of it is an investment product, if you will, I don't recommend that we get involved in that type of, that type of product that we offer our employees.
Is there any way, and I don't want to hurt anybody, but at the same time, I want to give our employees the best that we, that we can. Is there any way that we can move this item from voting on it today and get you to run it through our insurance advisory committee? And see what they think?
Good point.
And then come back to this board?
That's not a problem. I can email them. It's come up in the past.
Or is there a deadline? There's no hurry on this?
Well, actually-
We haven't had it in, how many years?
If, if there was an item to go out to bid, and if you did want to include it in this year's open enrollment, we would have to take action very, very quickly. Say tonight, just, just to get something, because it takes time to advertise, it takes time to evaluate the proposals, and pick any, and be another board meeting to enroll to approve it before we start in this coming year. So maybe it'd be something to consider looking at for-
Actually, in other words, we'd have to have a special meeting to, to approve this?
That's correct.
Possibly.
Possibly, because open enrollment will start in mid-October and it will-
October what?
Usually it starts in the middle of October and it runs through Thanksgiving, and then clean up the first week of December before we go out. The goal is to have everything in place, ready to go, before we go on break, so come January first, everything's ready to go.
So for everybody to feel comfortable and for, for yourself and for the employees, like Mr. Lopez said, we should just kind of go through their, you know, the insurance board, the advisory board, and then we come back and have a special meeting if-
We could definitely, I can visit with the, I can, and visit with the employee committee, see how they feel.
We have a September 12th meeting, Mike. We also have one on September 15th. Fifteenth, it looks like, for purposes of the underwriting, is there an issue with that?
There, there would be. If we start open enrollment, when we always do, in the middle of October, it would be really, really tight to, to go out for, to release a proposal, do the necessary time to advertise it, give the necessary time for the, for the people to underwrite it. So we have to advertise two weeks in a row. Usually we give another two to three weeks for, for people to actually, you know, underwrite the product for questions and answers. And then, once we get it, it would take us some time to evaluate it, and like, like we mentioned, it's very difficult to evaluate these types of, these types of products. So to get it in for, if it, if it is approved and we do offer it, to get it in for the October open enrollment, it's really stretching it, and I feel that we wouldn't have the time to do our due diligence.
Well- Hey, Mike, can you say any, any positive about if we would go this direction? I mean, what would be positive about it or what? You know, I mean, is it just that we get to offer it?
You're, you're offering additional life insurance to the employees with-
But we don't have to pay anything at all, right?
No, we don't pay anything. Like, the voluntary products are, are like the cancer and the disability, those types of products. The district funds absolutely nothing. It's the employees that pay.
We're facilitating their being able to buy these products and pay through payroll deduction is the advantage to employees.
That's correct, Mr. Gonzalez. You'd select the project-
We have to name an agent of record.
And then you would select an agent to service.
So that's why it would be a lengthy process, right?
It's a process.
It'd be, so in other words, it'd be best if we vote on it now?
If you were inclined to take it out to bid, then we would need to move on it fairly quickly.
Can we take it out to bid and then make a decision later?
Well, legal counsel, can I withdraw my second? And that way, we can decide what are we going to do?
Yeah, I was, I was about to ask you the same thing. Can I withdraw my motion as well?
That way.
So we can decide on what we have to-
Table it and then let you guys do that? We have to go to the voting and decline it or?
Yeah, you can, you can withdraw your second, you can withdraw your motion.
But before, before I do that, like you were saying, if we can vote on it right now, and then you can, you know, figure it out, I mean, is that, is that going to be bad or good or not as well?
Well, basically, you're giving us direction to request, to initiate a request for proposals. So if that happens, then we would certainly, you know, get to work on it right away and, you know, do our due diligence and bring it back-
I'm not ready to vote.
Yeah, I'm not, so I was going to ask, Andrew, what do you, how do you feel? You're, you're the one that-
Well, before we start polling, I mean, that's, that's just-
It's still discussion, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, but you can't ask how somebody's going to vote.
Right, you can. I was going to ask, I was going to say something.
Go ahead.
Well, I already, I already withdrew my second.
And you withdrew?
So that way-
I withdrew.
Okay, so the motions are withdrawn. Is that enough?
Correct.
Okay, if there's further discussion?
Well, he asked me a question. If you want me to answer it, then I'll answer.
What's your question?
Yeah, I mean, Andrew, how do you feel about, how do you feel about it?
Again, you have major companies in Wesaco. I don't need to name them. Everybody knows who I represent. And there's other big agents like that, that, that represent a great policy. And then you have a lot of independents here in Wesaco. You're talking about, there's over thirty agents just in our town alone that offer this type of product, whether it's through combining policies and you receive it. My, my concern is, is the way a whole-life policy works, which is what Roger and Mike are trying to explain to y'all. And number two, there's only a select group of individuals that do the voluntary products that already get school districts, whether it's ours, our neighboring school districts, those to the west and those to the east of us. This at least allows the home agent, the local agents, to at least offer this type of policy to, to better help their customers, in a nutshell. And so, again, you're asking me as, as insurance committee, I guess, as well as I serve on that committee. That's my concern. It's not that we're taking away anything from any of our employees because we don't pay for it, they pay for it. You're just putting it in the hands of their current insurance agent to provide them with that policy. Or all the other independents here that can pick up the phone and go call, which is what I do.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I just say, I mean, I guess we can table this item and, and then, I mean, as soon as possible, we can get a special meeting and get this done so you can meet your deadline, you know?
Ivan, do we need to table it if there's no motion? Or we just say it's a non-action?
You don't have to formally table it.
Just non-action, Adam?
No action.
So what's the direction we would like to give Mr. De La Rosa?
I would like for him to meet with, with this committee and then report back to us with a thumbs up or a thumbs down in regards from the committee and then-
Yeah, why don't we ask Dr. Leo to follow up on that? Give us an update in the superintendent's update, let us know what, what the results of that are.
What's that timeline?
We'll determine, we'll determine the direction after she gives us a report. If it's something that needs immediate attention, we'll do something quickly. If not, then we'll come back and revisit it on the 12th.
All right, sounds good.
Is that all right? Dr. Leo?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Roger.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I'll stick up, I'll stick around for the next item.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
Item number eight, discussion regarding NAP Medical Center and other medical facilities' participation in the Wesaco ISD Exclusive Provider Organization, EPO, and/or Preferred Provider Organization, PPO.
Along the same line of looking out for the best interest of employees, Mr. De La Rosa, thank you, sir. Mr. De La Rosa has been very diligent at working-
Thank you.
And trying to negotiate with medical facilities in the surrounding area to offer the best rates and services to our employees when the need arises. And so this is an information item, because you, as community representatives, field the questions from our employees and their families as these questions arise. So, Mr. La Rosa, we'll present to you an update of how things have gone with these centers.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Leo, and again, good evening to Mr. President, members of the board. As you know, for the last year, we've been discussing direct provider contracts, and one particular issue and question that we've been advising the board for the past year is the EPO contracts with our facilities, specifically one in question, which is NAP Medical Center. Of course, we've been updating the board of our, the status of our continued negotiations with them. So just to give the community, and the public, and the employees a perspective of how this works, I've kind of, I've put together a brief slideshow that I hope that can convey my point across. So just, just to start off, a little bit of history, in two thousand and four, we restructured our employee benefit plan from a two-tier platform to a three-tier structure, which is known as the EPO or Exclusive Provider Organization. Employees who utilize the hospitals and the physicians and the other ancillary providers, but here, we're going to focus specifically on hospitals. Employees who utilize the hospitals and the EPO enjoy a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible. This is versus seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars if the employees are on the base plan, and this is, the vast majority of our employees do participate in the base plan. There is also a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar hospital copay that you, that you must pay if you're on the base plan. That does not apply if you use a facility in the EPO or Exclusive Provider Organizations. So basically, that's a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar savings to an employee on the base plan. Now, that's not necessarily a discount that the hospital gives that. The plan absorbs that seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars that the employee would have paid.
Now, the plan is the district.
Is the district, correct. Okay. The cost of the seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars should be offset, offset, excuse me, with the competitive pricing agreements that we have with these EPO facilities. So us absorbing that seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars should be offset through the agreements that we have with these facilities.
You mean a discounted rate for the services they're providing?
Exactly. Yes, sir. So the district, through our TPA, which is Freitas Benefit Administrators, and to, and to a direct, excuse me, a direct agreement with NAP Medical Center and Doctors Hospital at Renaissance. But the purpose of this agreement was to receive favored nations pricing structure from NAP and other facilities in our EPO. In return, the district included NAP Medical Center, it is an exclusive provider organization. The EPO provides a great deal of steerage to these facilities. So the hope is to incentivize employees to utilize these facilities to keep them going to facilities that we have better agreements with, arrangements. So this is just a quick overview of the base plan of the EPO level versus the PPO level, and then, of course, your out-of-network benefit level. So as you can see, the deductible's significantly lower on the EPO for the base plan, and of course, out-of-network is extremely higher.
So we're trying to steer our employees and their covered dependents to our local hospital.
To the providers in our EPO.
At a lower cost to them and a savings to the district.
That is the plan, or that, that is the, that was the intention behind it. So it started in two thousand and fourteen, and in two thousand and fifteen, we evaluated both of the hospital providers in our EPO network. A comparison revealed that the direct pricing structure with Prime Healthcare, so you're going to, you're going to hear me say Prime Healthcare, that refers to NAP Medical Center and Harlingen Medical Center. So anytime I say NAP or HMC, it's, those two companies are owned by Prime Healthcare out of California. So when we identified our contracts with these providers, we noticed that the pricing structure is almost exactly the same through the pricing structure offered through our PPO or our RAP network. Okay? That being said, we sent a letter to NAP outlining our position, and we proposed a new pricing structure to NAP. And I believe that if you recall, in two thousand, late two thousand and fifteen, I did advise the board of what was going on with this.
So we were providing, they were paying discounted rates for our employees, right? Our employees were paying, paying discounted rates, but we weren't realizing any of the savings.
That is correct. Okay. So here's a copy of the letter that we sent to NAP Medical Center. It basically states that we evaluated their contract, and at this point, we felt that their current pricing structure was no longer favorable to the district. So along with this letter went a offer, a pricing offer to NAP, which they evaluated and they subsequently denied. So here's a copy of the email that was sent, basically saying, thank you very much, but we're happy where we're at.
Now, you, you sent this to Diana and got response from Maribel. Is there a reason why there is a difference in the response?
Diana, at the time, was the CFO of the hospital, sorry, Chief Financial Officer of the hospital, but Ms. Burns is the principal network negotiator, if you will. So as you can tell by her response, she copied Ms. Diana, and of course, I don't believe that she copied under individuals within Prime Healthcare. So obviously, she was acting within, within the authority of the hospital. So even though Prime refused our offer and did not bother to send a counteroffer or to negotiate, we went ahead and, and made the decision to let the current, to continue to allow NAP to remain in the EPO through the end of the two thousand and sixteen plan year. In May, we advised them that as of September first, benefits would be processed at the PPO level and not at the EPO level. Okay? On July twenty-ninth, Independent Medical Systems, or IMS, which is the PPO that we rent, that these plans, we're going, these claims are going to be processed through, advised us that Wesaco ISD employees would no longer have access to NAP Medical Center or Harlingen Medical Center through their network.
Mike, before you go any further, before I get lost, because IMS is the administrator, we were, and we were getting the same mess.
IMS is the PPO network.
And we had them at EPO, but we weren't getting the savings, so going through IMS, we were still going to-
It was, it was the same thing.
The same thing.
Okay. However, the only difference is, is the employees would not realize that two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar deductible, deductible, excuse me.
Mike, also, real quick, before you move on, if I'm not, I believe there's a new CEO at NAP now? Have we touched base with him?
Yes, I have. I didn't, I did meet with him. But moving on, this is the email that we received from IMS, which is the PPO, I mean, the PPO network that we rent, that we have access to because we pay money to access this network. Basically, they sent us a letter advising that we would no longer have access to Harlingen Medical Center or NAP Medical Center. Basically, I guess, forcing our hand, according to the information that I got, that they, they prefer to deal with WISD directly versus their contracted network that they already had in place. I don't understand the rationalization for that. What I can only assume is that they're forcing our hand to try and keep them in the EPO. But, that being said, we did make an attempt to reach out through Freitas with NAP to sign an agreement so that our employees could still utilize that facility on the PPO level. So as you can see, the agreement was executed on August seventeenth or eighteenth. At nowhere, or in no place in this agreement, does it specify that we have to include this, these facilities in our Exclusive Provider Organization. So we thought everything was good and ready to go. And then, on August twenty-fifth, which is Thursday, this Thursday of last, we received a network, or we received a letter from, or from NAP basically rescinding their agreement that they had signed a week before. They stated that their recession was due to the fact that Prime was not listed as an EPO provider. We had already advised Prime back in May that they would not be participating in the EPO. I'm sorry, it says here June, but it's in May. Here is a copy of the letter that NAP sent to Freitas, basically withdrawing their, the offer that they made to remain in the PPO network, or to provide as PPO pricing. So through their actions, not the district's, they would be considered an out-of-network provider effective September first. Okay? It should also be noted that these two facilities will be the only facilities in the valley that are out of network. Like I mentioned, through their actions, not the district's. So I kind of wanted to give the board an update, and the public an update, of how this works and what the challenges that we're facing here with them.
We need to make sure to let all of the employees know immediately, obviously, that they should obviously try to coordinate their services to an appropriate or participating hospital.
As, as you can see through the letter, that letter was dated this past Thursday. So of course, I immediately- so of course, I immediately contacted Dr. Leo to discuss it with her, we met Friday morning, and of course, this item was put on the agenda today to advise, to advise the board first, before we sent out a mass email notifying our employees. Now, it should be note, it should be noted, though, that there are plenty of other facilities in the valley that will provide services. In fact, we've been talking to another hospital provider, Roger, if you wanna touch on that?
I think the issue is more the emergency care, you know, like there's.
Yeah, the point is, where are they gonna go? Where, I mean, where are we sending them?
So, Mike, is their best option the one off the highway?
If they go after 9-1, nobody's gonna be turned away from an emergency room, okay? So if you're, if you're having a serious health issue, no one will be turned away from an emergency room. The problem is, is that when the bills start coming, we're only gonna pay out-of-network benefits at their choice. So we're gonna pay, at, our plan document states that after a $1,000 deductible, we pay 50% of allowable charges. Out-of-network allowable charges for us is Medicare plus 125%, okay? The problem is, is since there's no contract available, that the employee will receive a bill for the difference. So therein lies the problem. However, there are other facilities in the valley that people can go to, there is an ER that's north of the expressway that employees can utilize as well, that's in the PPO network.
Has NAP done this to any other district or any other?
We're the only district that has done something like this, so to answer your question is no.
It is very disappointing that we can't cut a deal with our local hospital, you know, NAP's, you know, here in Wesaco, and, you know, we always strive on, you know, going, you know, helping our local people, but very disappointing that we can't come to an agreement with NAP. I would really, you know, wish that you can go out there and maybe try, try it again, you know, try one more time and see what we can do, 'cause it's, in a way, it's kind of inconvenient for our employees that they have to travel out to go somewhere when they have NAP right here.
I agree, Mr. Gonzalez, and no one, and no one's more disappointed than I, however the fact remains that, you know, we gave them the opportunity to negotiate, they refused, so we're certainly not going to buy something from one vendor that we know we can get at a better price from other vendors. And, and not only that, but in essence, make, these, these people are exclusive, okay? So, like I mentioned, it doesn't make any sense, if we agree to buy all of our groceries from HEB, and we have to go there, but we know that Walmart has the same prices, why am I sending everybody to HEB when? It's competition, and, and they had every opportunity to come to the table, but unfortunately, as you can see by the letter here, I mean, that is their stance.
I understand, you know, I just, it's very disappointing.
Mike, have you reached out, Dr. Leo, have y'all reached out to our employees?
Not yet, as Mr. De La Rosa said, we wanted to inform the board first of all of the transactions back and forth, and informing you, then we will go to.
As, if I may, Mr. Gonzalez, employees were advised at the beginning of June that they could no longer utilize NAP at the EPO level, but they could, in fact, still utilize the facility at the PPO level. This notice that we got from NAP was on Thursday.
Right, so my suggestion would be, reach out to all our campus principals, I think they meet every day with, with the grade department or.
In fact, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow.
Just so that it can, send an email with urgent, so they can read it, they can open it, and then if each campus would just, during their grade level meetings, meet with everybody, 'cause then you know you're gonna get through everybody, and then our support staff, you know, reach out to them, just so that they know that, you know, in the event that they go there, that they're, they may pay out of pocket.
It will cost more.
They, they will be paying.
It will cost more.
And it'll be significant.
So please, please reach out to, to all of our employees to make sure that they're well aware of, of the change.
Mr. Gonzalez, just for the, for the record, this past week, actually on Friday, we reached a tentative agreement with Valley Baptist Health Systems that have elected to give us a competitive price. I'm happy to report that it's one of only, it's actually the only agreement they've ever signed like that in, anywhere in the valley. But I was given permission by Tenet Hospital Systems to announce that we have reached a tentative agreement with them.
Well, that's, that's great, 'cause I think when we had our last meeting, they were, one of the leading hospitals were.
Yeah, and that's my concern, is NAP is such a high utilization for our employees, that we just need to make sure to get that word out over and over and over and over.
Well, it's.
I think Valley Baptist was number one, wasn't it?
Yep.
It was very close, yes, but once again, the agreement is effective for September 1. We will receive favorable pricing treatment, so we look forward to that relationship with Valley Baptist and its affiliates moving forward in the future. We will keep you posted with a monthly and quarterly report so that you can see the utilization that begins to occur there.
So we still have, then, obviously, thank you, with Valley Baptist, South Texas Health Systems, DHR.
DHR is the other, the other hospital that's in our EPO, there will continue to be in our EPO. We will reach out to the emergency room that is across the expressway, see what kind of deal we can work out with them. I know they are in network, however, their, their physicians or the ER docs are not, so we've been trying to reach out to them for a while, because as you know, that ER docs are not in anybody's network, because they don't have to be.
Right.
It's, can you keep us updated on our update, you know?
Absolutely.
As far as how it goes. I, I wanna clear a picture of what's going on.
Yeah.
I wonder, I mean, we're talking dollars here, and, and really, we're talking lives. Our, our people are gonna keep, continue going to Wesaco. There's, I don't think there's any doubt in anybody's mind, you know, and if they're gonna have to be paying these prices, it's, it's not gonna work, you know, so you need to get to work, you know? You need to get us information that we need to know, what is the difference, why don't they wanna work? If they wanna meet with us and bring him here, or we can go there, but whatever we can do legally, we need to do it and get it done fast, because this is not right.
Well, it, you're, you're absolutely right, it's not right, and it's something.
And if they totally refuse, let them, let them write us a letter, tell you know what? We don't wanna work with Wesaco.
It's, it's.
It's here, it is here.
But I want it clearer than that, and I wanna know why. Is it the dollars? How much dollar, how much? What is it?
Well, that's not something I can discuss in open session.
I know we can't, but, but we, we, you can tell us in closed session if necessary.
Certainly, and I'm prepared to do that.
And, and it's just not right, you know, and.
I agree, it's not right.
And, and we're gonna get the blame for it.
Yeah, we're gonna have a lot of set employees.
That's why I included these letters, that's why I included everything in these attachments.
If I may, I preface this topic by saying, Mr. De La Rosa has been working diligently, diligently. From the moment I stepped in, he was quick to inform me, this is what's going on, this is what we are attempting, and he continuously kept me abreast. I can certify to you that it has not been for lack of effort on his part and his staff and anyone else that he has engaged. He has tried his utmost to convince the hospital to meet us halfway. And as you can see from the actual documents that he added to this packet, you can see that from a year ago, he was dialogue, in dialogue, certainly with NAP Medical. Why they have taken this position, we cannot say, but that you are asking that we continue the, the discussions with them, absolutely, there's no reason why we would not, and that we will make a highly concerted effort at making our employees aware that this is the risk they take, if, that, that they may incur greater expense if they go to this hospital, we will do that as well. And if it is possible to bring back better information to you, we will, but in any case, we will keep you informed.
And I agree with Mr. Lopez, can we have, like, maybe a meeting with maybe the CEO and the other administrators from NAP or Prime, you know, with us, like, kinda like a workshop or something like that?
I can certainly advise them, I can, I can certainly invite them to come and participate in a workshop, in a meeting, in closed session, entirely at the discretion of the board. However, they need to come ready to, to negotiate, and, and, like Dr. Leo mentioned, at least meet us halfway. And the dialogue that we had with them for the past year, Mr. Garza and myself, they have not been willing to meet us halfway.
Yeah.
So I can't, I wouldn't be doing my job if I would continue, if, if I knew that we weren't getting a good deal, if I knew that, you know, there were, there were opportunities to help our plan, because as, as I report every month, our health plans are, health costs are going through the roof. So we're looking at every possible angle, every possible opportunity to see what we can save.
And that was, thank you, and that was going to be my next point, is, don't mistake this, that we don't necessarily wanna provide a better service to our employees, but at the same time, we have to take, take care of taxpayer money.
Yeah.
And ultimately, all these higher prices that we're paying, and they're non-negotiated rates, or however many times we're paying, times Medicare, if they're not negotiating those pricing, that pricing with us, eventually, the taxpayers are gonna end up paying for this. Because our budget will continue to increase, right?
Yes, sir.
And we just, we just had a tremendous loss this year of, what, $2 million? We don't know what the next year is going to be, and obviously, that was a great concern to us during the budget process. My concern is that if they're not gonna negotiate with us and our prices continue to escalate, we will not be able to continue to provide the same type of insurance benefits, or the, or all the benefits that we try to provide our employees, which is the dental and the life and everything else, because we're gonna have to supplement the health.
Yep.
So if it's a high utilization hospital, I agree, we need to be more aggressive about the pricing and make sure that we negotiate that lower so that we can continue to afford it within our budget. Because if not, taxpayers are gonna pay, and that's a fact.
Mike, do what you can, Mike. Yeah, man, thank you for all your work, and I know you've been working hard on it, so thanks a lot, man.
Do what you can, it's just hard to believe that our hometown hospital cannot give us a deal.
And just, if I may, if I may.
Hold on, like, I, what really I think has transpired, what used to be our hometown hospital, they're gone.
Yeah.
You know, they, they got bought out, and now corporate dictates, dictates what, what they can and cannot do.
And that is the point that I was gonna make, Mr. Gonzalez.
And, and it's unfortunate, and I think everybody that's in here, and our employees should know that, we strive to do what's best by them and get them the best possible care.
Yes, sir.
So, Mike, again, thank you for your hard work, your staff.
And then adding to that, at the same time, yes, it's corporate America, but I'm willing to bet there are several people from Wesaco that work there. You know, you pull something like this out of there, and I don't know why they wanna, wouldn't wanna work with us, it's gonna affect the, the working class, people that go to work there every day. You know, so I just want you to do the best that you can, and I know you have been doing it, to get to the bottom of this, and if it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, but not by our lack of trying.
Well, certainly, our door will remain open, and will always remain open.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Any further discussion regarding this?
No, sir.
Obviously, this is a sensitive issue, Dr. Leo, and encourage you and your staff, again, to make sure that everybody is well informed about the consequences of choosing local after this agreement terminates, because it will impact their personal budgets and their personal finances, because there's no protection for them when they go to, to an out-of-network facility. So do our, do our part, let's do our part and make sure we educate our staff as best we can. But thank you again. Section nine, closed meeting, number one, personnel matters, A, employment of personnel and new hires, B, resignations. At this point in time, it's 7:04, and we will convene an executive session. It's now 7:26, and we will reconvene an open meeting, give Ms. Rosemary a chance to change tapes. Okay, item number one, personnel matters, letter A, employment of personnel, new hires, Dr. Leo.
Members of the board, I recommend that you approve the personnel recommendations presented to you in executive session, new hires.
I'll move.
Motion by Oscar Cavallero, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Rosmar Lopez, any further discussion?
You know, we had a lot of good people applying, unfortunately, there's only one position open, so we can't hire everybody that's, that's qualified, and, and more opportun, more opportunities will, will come up, so, in the future.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please vote to it by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same side. Motion carries, letter B, resignations, I didn't see any.
No, there were none.
There were none, so this is a non-action item. We are now in section 11, adjournment.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, 7:27, this meeting is adjourned.